Good evening, everyone. This is the City Council meeting of Monday, November 21st, 2016. We'll start with roll call and determination of quorum.
Nordstrom. Drew. Solomon. Doyle. Estes. Scott. Laurenti. Wright. Modrick. Roberts. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll have the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And for both of these, you're welcome to participate, but certainly not required. And for our invocation, we have Trish Jurgensen.
Thank you, Mayor. There's scripture in the Word from Philippians 4:6 and 7 I thought would be appropriate for this Thanksgiving week. Be anxious for nothing but in everything by prayer and supplication. With Thanksgiving, let your requests be known to God. And the peace of God, which surpasses all understanding, will guard your hearts and minds through Christ Jesus. God, during this week of Thanksgiving, we thank and give you glory for all officials and citizens here with us this evening. We ask for your blessing and favor upon those in the decision-making process, and pray your blessing upon this meeting. We pray your protection within their marriages, families, and workplace, and ask they be a beacon of light wherever their feet may go or whatever they put their hands to. Be with them in every area that they serve. Help them to walk in integrity and be mindful of the decisions they make. Our creating a legacy for many generations to come. We ask that you guard and protect the highways and byways of the Black Hills from harm. Bring peace and rest within this city and unity within all cultures in ways we've never known before. Bless and provide peace as we remember those fighting for our great country that cannot be home with loved ones during the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. We ask these things and give you thanks and praise. In your name we pray. Amen.
And now on to adoption of the agenda. We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda tonight. I'd like to add item number 95 per our City Finance Officer and entitle it "Property Tax Abatement Request, City of Rapid City."
Okay, are there any other items to be added? Any objection to adding 95A, property tax abatement? Okay, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion by Scott and a second by Laurenti to adopt the agenda with the addition of item 95A. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to awards and recognitions. Can I have Brandy Tonkel come up also? Last month, we had an award related to the Extra Mile America Program. Nonprofit organization empowering individuals and organizations and cities to go the extra mile. The work, their work is inspired by the belief that going the extra mile opens doors to new possibilities. It improves results we find in life, both professionally and personally. Going the extra mile allows us to make a difference in our community and to the world. So we did one last month. We're going to do this one this month, and that's the... Those are the two that we'll do for this year. So now I'll turn it over to the person nominating and see if she would like to say a few things.
What a treat, I get to talk about Brandy. So we were thrilled when we learned that Brandy was going to be nominated for this award. Brandy serves as a forensic interviewer in our community and is the voice for so many children every year who've been abused. But Brandy goes above and beyond every single day in the work that she does. Her numbers of interviews have increased significantly over the last year. And one would think that you might get burnt out or you might get tired. But that's not what happens with Brandy. She works harder and harder, and she finds the little ways to make the days important. She'll find just the right jacket for a child after an interview. She'll find the perfect blanket in the color that she thinks they're going to like, or even work with a team to try to help find a tent if that's what the family needs. So I'm just absolutely so lucky to get to come to work every day and work next to Brandy as she stands up for all of the children in our community.
Okay, now I have an executive proclamation to read. Whereas the City of Rapid City acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Rapid City chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Rapid City has chosen to honor Brandy Tonkel for her role as forensic interviewer for the Children's Home Child Advocacy Center. During her five years as an interviewer, she has given voice to over 1,100 children, most of whom were referred for possible sexual assault. With grace and tenacity, Brandy works with community partners toward the most successful outcome for the child. And whereas Brandy has been nationally trained to interview children in a non-leading, non-suggestive, child-friendly manner, gathering all of the necessary information with the goal of reducing a child's trauma to repeated interviews. And whereas Brandy continues to push herself and strengthen the program, she interviews for the FBI, and when she saw the impact travel was having on the families from the reservation, she advocated to provide services directly to the families. Today, she travels to the Four Directions Clinic in Kyle twice a month to conduct interviews. And whereas Brandy provides training and recognition and responding to child sexual abuse with the goal of decreasing incidence of abuse, responding effectively when it does occur, easing the trauma for the child and reducing the chance of future occurrences. And whereas Brandy is a great support to those in her career field, she will answer questions, help to coordinate investigations, serve as an empathetic ear, and take phone calls outside of her typical work schedule. As one partner has said, "Brandy is on my gratitude list almost every day." Not everyone is comfortable talking about sexual abuse, but Brandy has most certainly made a difference in our community and is considered an extra-mile hero. Now therefore, I, Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim November 21st, 2016, as Brandy Tonkel Day in Rapid City, and encourage each individual in our community to take time on this day to go the extra mile in his or her own life and to acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, and world a better place.
So I would just, I guess I would just like to say thank you so much for this honor. Not very many people can say that they do, for a living, what they've always wanted to do, and I am blessed to be able to do that. I work with some amazing partners in our community, and I'm just so thankful that I get to do what I do every day. And thank you to all of the children who are the true heroes, who are so strong and are an example every day of true strength. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the general public comment. A time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. We have one speaker request form for a general comment from Mr. James Swan. You can approach the podium, and you have three minutes, sir.
I just wanted to address a mayor on an issue that the mayor knows about regarding Rapid City Police Department, an issue that we had at Main Street Square. I'm not going to go into details, but I have sent all the information to the mayor. I'd contacted several agencies in the state and outside of the state on this issue, and they all said to talk to your mayor. Well, that didn't work, so I decided to come here tonight to tell the mayor that I made a lot of attempts to get him the information and to address this issue. Had it been one of the past marriages, we would have had coffee somewhere. The other thing is, I will always stand 100% in defense of the homeless people in this town. Whether they're getting abused, whether they're getting railroaded, whether they're getting cheated on, I will 100% stand for their defense. My organization will also stand for their defense. We had an awesome homeless feed Sunday. We have it every year. It was our seventh year. We fed over 400 homeless people, and it was a community coming together. It was church groups, not just my organization. In the past, we've had members of the City Council come out and bring donations and support. That's been awesome. This year, I didn't see anybody. I thought maybe somebody from the city would come by and, you know, promote their unity issue. That didn't happen. We did have a, appeared to be a undercover, I wouldn't say undercover, but an officer out of uniform that was mingling in the crowd. Other than that, we didn't see any police department there. So that was kind of disheartening. But I just want to let everybody know that I'm not going to give up on this issue, and I'm going to make sure that a lot of people are aware of this. And I do not support some of the race relation programs in this city because it seems to be one-sided, and it doesn't include other members of other tribes. All these people in Rapid City are from nine different tribes here in South Dakota. Native Americans in Rapid City only make up about 12%, and that's a very small percent. But we are still part of this community, and we do have a voice. And every time there's something done on our behalf, it's always something that was chosen and done by the other side without our participation, for lack of better words. So I know nothing's going to be done about this. It's going to be blowed off and under the rug like it usually is. But I wanted to take the time to make this statement so that everybody knows that I did give up my wrestling tonight to come here. But that's what I wanted to say. I know my time is running out. Like I said, I don't expect anything out of here, but I was really disappointed that our mayor couldn't even contact me back with a message to say, "We'll look into it." Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's all for the general public comment. Now on to non-public hearing items, items 2 through 95. And we'll open the public comment on items 2 through 42. We have one speaker request form from Mike Cool from Pennington County.
Good evening. Mike Cool, Pennington County Billings and Grounds Construction Project Manager. I just wanted to speak on this item. I apologize, I don't have any support information to show you. Our consultant was out of the office sick today, so I didn't get information that I would like to have had to show you. I would like the council to reconsider the, our variance request regarding staff comment to deny. Pennington County does support the idea, wants to do its part relative to adding sidewalks where necessary, but our concern is that we have, we'll end up with a stretch of sidewalk in the middle of a block essentially that, with no possible way of adding extensions to streets on either end for the foreseeable future. It doesn't seem, it doesn't make sense to us. We think that there should be some other alternative, possibly trying to put the sidewalk maybe out in the strip of land between the Highway 16 and the service road at our, next to our highway facility. As I said, this is something that, you know, we want to do our part. It just doesn't seem like this is something that a wise use of money that we have to spend, we'll have to maintain, but it isn't something that can be extended to either end. If the school property to the south of the highway property extended a sidewalk to the Pennington County property, you know, it makes a little more sense, but their property pinned on their southeast corner is actually almost right on the edge of the service road now. So I don't see how adding a sidewalk anytime soon is possible when their property is fenced anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll close the public comment and go on to consent items, items 2 through 42. Would the council like to remove any of these items? Seeing no lights. Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item number 34 and 41, please.
Steve Laurenti.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item 37.
Lisa Modrick.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to request 21.
21?
Mm-hmm. 27, no, I think, yeah, I do want 27 in there. 28. And 29. And if I haven't run out of numbers yet, 37. If it's called, then I'm glad for that. Thank you, Jason. And 40. And 46.
Okay, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Items 33 and 47, please.
Okay, 47 is not on consent.
Thank you.
How fast that was? Darla Drew.
Item 14, thank you.
Maybe we should have asked you which ones you didn't want to pull. Okay. Now you expect me to keep these in chronological order, is that correct?
Sure.
There'll be no problem. We will go then to, oh, well, all right, let's have a motion then to approve the consent items with the exception of 34, 41, 37, 21, 27, 28, 29, 40, 33, and 14.
I make a motion to approve?
Okay, motion approved by Solomon.
Second.
Second by Darla Drew. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, now let's go to item 14, which is to authorize staff to advertise for bids for Rapid City Public Library Public Area Update Project. Estimated cost $125,000.
Mayor, I pulled that item, and I'd like to move to approve and retain the floor.
Okay, a motion in a second, and you have the floor.
Could I get Jim McShane out for a couple of questions, please? Jim, there seems to have been some kind of miscommunication in the community about this project, and I thought maybe you could just answer a couple of questions as to what is going to be done with this phase of the library project renovation.
It's simply a replacement of the carpet on the main floor and painting the library, and we'll add some shelving to that area as well.
Now, is this when the bookstore model is going to be implemented as well? Yes, okay. So you will be moving shelves around. I mean, it'll look different to a lot of people that have used that library for a while, correct?
It will look somewhat different, and we hope that it will be a little bit more accessible as well.
For those of you who don't know, since we're going to be moving the shelving in there, it will create different walking patterns. And, you know, right now, the carpet might look pretty good to a lot of people, but as soon as you move those shelves, I think you're going to see, you know, how much wear and tear has really gone on in there. So that's really what I wanted to clarify here, what this particular sum of money was going towards at the library at this time. So, thank you, Jim.
Sure. Okay, we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and you can stay for just one second. I just have one quick question. When was the last time we did a major renovation of the library?
I assume it was 2002.
2002? So it's been that long?
Yeah, that was adding on to the old library.
Okay. When's the last time we renovated the first floor?
It was more than 10 years ago.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. On to item number 21, which is to approve the request from Alex Drueitz for a variance to waive the requirement to install sidewalk per Rapid City ordinance along Wildwood Drive adjacent to 5515 Wildwood Drive, Rapid City. And we'll go to Lisa Modrick.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion and would like a second to retain the floor on approving the request from Alex Drueitz for a variance to waiver the adjacent 5515 Wildwood Drive, Rapid City on the install of a sidewalk. And if I could get a second to discuss.
Okay, we have a motion by Modrick and a second by Solomon for approval. And go ahead.
Thank you. I felt that it was an item that we should pull so that we could have some conversation because the council's working so diligently to stay within ordinance on our sidewalk placements. And on this approval, as it's been shown in this parcel, in fact, in this entire area of Wildwood Drive, it's a challenged area. It's not just one home, but maybe most of the homes that are up there that would be regarded as a challenge to put any sidewalking in. So this approval request, I think, is important to adhere to. It does show that even when we want to do right by putting sidewalks in the entire city, sometimes a location pops up and it's just not the right place. So with that, I would like this motion to prove itself with a requirement of installing the sidewalk as a waiver.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. On to item number 27. Acknowledge the report for traffic signal warrants at East Minnesota and Elkvale Road intersection, and direct staff to bring back a recommendation for the installation and a funding recommendation for the traffic light at the intersection of East Minnesota and Elkvale Road. Lisa Modrick.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to again acknowledge this report. We did have a warrants presentation. We did have a warrants presentation, and I'm not sure if the full council would be in request of that, although we did have the links on it. But this traffic signal has been requested by the neighboring communities and as well as the businesses around there for quite some time. So it's actually a celebration that we finally hit the warrants on this. And I would hope that with that recommendation that we've put forward, that we get the installation funding recommendation on the traffic signal of East Minnesota and Elkvale Road fairly soon, so we can get this install in and completed. The safety issues warrant that as well. So I'd like to see this come back to us as soon as we can and get that funding in place so that we can install that.
Okay, Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarifying question. This is to bring back a recommendation to Public Works, correct? Not to the city council meeting, but bring it back to Public Works.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Jason Solomon.
Do we get a motion?
Oh, we did. Motion's to approve.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Just want to make sure I didn't, oh, forgot it. We're good.
Okay, we have a motion to either approve or acknowledge. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and I guess if I could ask Dale Tech a question on this particular item.
Of course.
Dale, do we need to, at least I think we should have an amendment to it. If somebody can follow after me to have a timeframe, I just wanted to ask you, how long would it take to come back for staff with a recommendation on this item?
The recommendation will not be on the next Public Works Committee agenda, but I anticipate it'll either be on the first or no later than the second one in December.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay, motion for approval is on the floor. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. On to item twenty-eight. Deny the request from Pennington County for a variance to waive the requirement to install sidewalk per Rapid City ordinance along the Campbell Street Service Road, Rapid City. Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. I bring this forward because this one, as opposite of the other one we had voted on, does state a request for denying Pennington County for the variance of the waiver and the requirement of the install sidewalk. And as we heard from Mr. Cool, one of the challenges they have on this location, as I understand it from the descriptions that we'd had as well, is that there's a retaining wall and fencing and the location itself, it's, in this case, it's not necessarily a sidewalk to nowhere, but there's actually some limitations on the sidewalk having a beginning and an ending. And that's what makes this one, again, weather unique on the request, understanding that we're trying to follow as close as we can our ordinance to place sidewalks in every location, but this one right now has a challenge. It's not even a sidewalk to nowhere where we could call a warp up or have the neighboring areas put a sidewalk in. So with that challenge, I wanted to bring this forward to council for discussion and see where we can go on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to uphold staff's request for denying this application for sidewalk at this location. So uphold staff's recommendation to deny the sidewalk.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Nordstrom, second by Laurenti, to uphold the denial. Back to Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. Try not to use all my time up in just a few minutes, but again, if we uphold this, this variance on this sidewalk, then what we do with the neighboring locations, I'd like to understand as well, because at some point, if they make some type of a change, we would have to require possibly changes in their land in order to get those sidewalks approved all the way across the service road.
Okay. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I made this motion is because I believe we can get a sidewalk installed in there. I understand the rationale that's being brought forward on the sidewalk to nowhere, but it's essentially that there is other buildable sidewalks in this vicinity. So it's just a matter of time when these are going to be installed as well. And I also want to share with the rest of the council members that I've been getting requests from other people within the community, not just people from this area that do the walking in this, shall I say pedestrian, and there's a lot of what they call demand trails, I call them people paths. They are in this area as well, and people do, could use a good sidewalk in this area. Yeah, yield.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is kind of an interesting one. I know that property out there pretty well, working for the county for a few years. There are people that walk out there. I've seen people at times walking out there. Typically, they use the service road because there's very little to no traffic on it other than the time that the buses are running. But this property, they can easily put a sidewalk there. But I don't think that that's really what we should be looking at. Without connectivity of those sidewalks, why are we forcing them to do it at this point? We, as a council, we can call in sidewalks anytime we want. So sometime in the future, if there is connectivity out there, if we can get the other lots next to it to put in sidewalks, we could call in the sidewalk then. But just putting a sidewalk in because we can, that doesn't connect to anything, to me, makes no sense whatsoever. So I won't be supporting Mr. Nordstrom. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be supporting Mr. Nordstrom on this. I think if we're going to become a walkable community like we wish to be, that we have to start somewhere. And maybe this might seem like it's non-essential in some regards, but I really think that if we don't start making a point of putting in the sidewalks, you know, we're going to always be waiving them and kicking the can down the road like it's been kicked down to us. And so at this point, I'm going to stick with the staff recommendation. So thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Mr. Dale Tech a question, please?
Yes, you may.
Dale, I know that in Public Works, when I streamed it, the, there was an agenda item to talk about the sidewalk discussion that the city council had requested, and I know staff has done a lot of work in going out and taking a look, and, you know, that discussion includes a recommendation in all the wards of the city as far as where potential benefits of ordering in sidewalks might occur. Is, does this parcel fall anywhere close to any recommendation within this ward? And, correct me if I'm wrong, but is this Ward two or Ward one?
We didn't look at it Ward by Ward. I, I'm sorry, I don't know which Ward it's in. I believe it's in Ward...
Two?
Two.
I'm hearing two, so.
The recommendation that you saw attached to the Public Works agenda, we had, I think it was about a half a dozen areas, and this was not one of the areas that was a high priority, correct?
All right. Just a comment. I can see both sides of this because, again, we, we want to have sidewalks put in that make sense, but I'm kind of stuck also that this is a county property, which is a taxable property, which is taxpayer money. And so if there are worn paths there, it does make sense to me to go ahead and order in the sidewalk at this time because it looks like it's fairly close to Oregon Street, which means that there would be connectivity or potential connectivity on a relatively near-future basis here. And it does look like there is a lot of buildup in that area. So I'm kind of on the fence on this, but I am really leaning towards approving staff's recommendation to put the sidewalk in. Thank you, Mayor.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. And for me, this comes down to a cost, cost benefit analysis. What I mean by that is it's going to cost X amount of dollars now, and that's counting, because you have to give them up with that tax funding to pay for that. But in the future, we only know that it's already going to go up in price. So it's going to cost the citizens more money in the future. So that's my main concern. If we don't do it now, it's going to cost more in the future. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I find this discussion interesting. I miss being on Public Works. I like discussions like this. But one thing that I find quite interesting is we just waived a sidewalk in a residential area where that should be more of a priority than in a commercial area. So, anyway, I think that if you look at the walking paths out there, the majority of the walking paths are across the highway and not on that side, if you really look at what's worn for walking paths. But that not being the point, I think the point needs to be, if we are going to waive sidewalks just intermittently, we need to work on what we need to do as a council. So, anyway, thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I don't disagree with you that we do have to have some kind of continuity in our decisions, but this decision was made on topography, and I think that I'd rather not have people walking in the street if that's possible. So, you know, if they're already making a people path, as Mr. Nordstrom said, I'd like to see some sidewalks go in there and not have them walking in the service road. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to uphold staff's denial of the appeal. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Two noes, Robertson, Modric. Okay, motion passes. Now on to item twenty-nine. Deny appeal by KTM Design Solutions. Sorry, I got lost. Deny appeal by KTM Design Solutions of an exception request denial to waive the requirement to construct public improvements on Dias Avenue and direct staff to come back with a funding source for the west side of the road, which will be reimbursed through the waiver of right to protest from the west side property owner. And... Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to uphold the denial of the appeal and retain the floor, if I can get a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Laurenti, and go ahead.
Thank you. And may I ask a clarifying question of Mr. Dale Tech, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Dale, when I streamed this, and I'm just asking you, because even as the mayor read it, it may be a little confusing because it's using generalities, but basically, the property on the, this is an east, this is a street that separates east and west, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the property owner on the west side that this is referring to had signed a waiver of right to protest when they didn't put in the improvements when they did their build-out, is that correct?
That's correct.
So what this is actually saying, and I'm just trying to use layman terms so that I, terms so I can understand it, we want staff to come back with a temporary funding source. We're going to order this in, so the current KTM Design Solutions has to put the improvements in. The city will pay, the KTM Design Solutions will pay, but then the city is going to reassess the property owner on the west side. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I can support that. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask one question of our city engineer?
Sure.
Mr. Tech, the, on, let's see, what's, on Dias, directly to the north of this property where the city just did, I believe that, was that a CIP project?
That's correct.
For that part of the road? Those business owners there, how much were they assessed for that street?
Nothing.
All right. I just wanted to bring that up to show you the fairness of property owners and developers in Rapid City, and how difficult it can be to get things done in this town. Because when you have properties that are getting new roads and people that are coming in trying to buy property, and all of a sudden, they've got half a million dollars' worth of road improvements where directly across the road, these people got a brand-new road for nothing in front of their businesses, how difficult it can be in this town. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to uphold the denial and direct staff to come back with a funding source for the west side of the road, which will be reimbursed through the waiver of right to protest from the west side property owner. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. One no from Mr. Roberts. Motion passes. Now on to item thirty-three. Item number thirty-three is to approve resolution number two thousand sixteen dash zero eight-five-A, a resolution fixing time and place for hearing on assessment role for cleanup of miscellaneous property. And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion and a second by Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out to a couple of items on this list. There's several, just touched briefly on it, several of these are not property owners that are on this list that we're looking at tonight. But I just wanted to point out two of these are, looks like the city is headed towards being the property manager on it, on these properties. And I'm looking at item number seven on the list, which is one thirteen A St. Francis Street, and it's going back at least two years on the abatements that we're having to consider. And then item thirteen, we're going back to two thousand fourteen for some other additional abatements. So I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the council. It starts, it's starting to look like, at least this time around, we've got two properties. And I noticed in other past miscellaneous cleanups, we're starting to get more and more of the city being responsible for being a property manager in a lot of cases. I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the rest of the council members. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the, Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to follow up with Alderman Nordstrom's comments there, I do know that ever since the city council passed that vacant residential property, the city staff has been working on, and I know our residents have especially, well, at least I know in Ward four, so our residents are re-contacting the city on some very nuisance properties that have been nuisance properties for well over, as Alderman Nordstrom said, ten years. And so I know staff is currently working on that. With the new resolution or the new ordinance that the city council passed, it's just going to take staff a little while to make sure that they go through the process of doing all that notification and stuff. But I anticipate hearing from staff bringing some of these nuisance properties to city council so that we can take stronger action on it. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor is for item thirty-three for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to item number thirty-four, which is to acknowledge the September two thousand sixteen sales tax report. We'll go to, we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to, I brought this up and pulled it on the Legal and Finance Committee meeting and spoke to my colleagues there, but I just wanted to raise the red flag again that, if you've all seen it, I'm sure that you have, we are currently one point four-six percent over last year. Our budgets are based on a two percent increase. So now we have November and December, we know it's, the revenues do pick up. But however, this is considerably lower than it has been at this time of the year based on previous year's performance. So I just wanted to bring it up for my colleagues so that we understand that if we have to, at the end of the budget year, make the hard decisions that we need to make to make sure that the city's budget is held to what we're spending, and that if we need to make cuts, then we will necessarily do that, just like every family in Rapid City does when they have a shortfall. So I just wanted to raise the red flag on where we're at with our sales tax. As we all know, it's one of our largest, it's our largest piece of tax revenue. So, thank you.
Now to Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask a question of the finance officer, please?
Yes.
Pauline? Can you give me some history on how much we make up during these last couple of months of the year? Typically, is it, do we have strong performance and would we be concerned?
So I always say don't get overly concerned because it, we still actually have three months left. This is as of the end of September, so we've October, November, December left. Now typically, I would say not to get too excited about anything quite yet. I will tell you, though, that the numbers from the rally being down have affected us because usually that's where we see the largest increases during the rally, depending on attendance. Looking at past history, you know, it's, the amount has ranged anywhere from a fifteen thousand dollar in- increase on one of those months to about a $170,000 increase in one of those months. So, it, it really depends on people's spending habits, and it's really hard to tell. I will point out, though, Mr. Laurenti is right in that we typically budget 2% over the previous years, but if you remember during the budget session, it's actually 2014 numbers plus 2% to account for 15, plus 2% over 15 projections to make 16, because we never know what 2015's going to be until like February of, of 16. So, in this case, when you look at that, the increase at the same time period in 2015 was about 3.5%. So, where we only budgeted 2% there in our budgeting process. So, we still may come out okay dollar-wise, even if percentage is off a little bit.
And our calculations, do, do we take into account the fact that it was the 75th anniversary of Sturgis, and do we budget according, I mean, do we, I mean, because we know that number's going to be big, so why would we, would that be kind of inflating our number a little bit, based on some monumental event?
It would inflate the actual revenues received in 2015. I do not budget that way because I'm kind of ultra-conservative in that, in that regard. So...
Okay. And, you know, just one more thing, I, I think this is an encouragement for our community to make sure that we're shopping local, not just for sales tax revenue that invest back in our community, but supporting our neighbors and their shops, and, and, you know, folks can make a living and build a business here. And I know that this Saturday is Small Business Saturday, and it's a good chance to get out and shop local, and so I think this just is a good reminder to, to do that and invest in Rapid City and the folks who live here. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. And just one other clarifying point, if I may ask the finance officer one, one other question?
Yes.
Pauline, it's been a while since I've actually done the math on this, but am I correct in saying this is just a snapshot of this month compared with last year's same-time month? It's not a yearly or an annual number that we're looking at. It's just a snapshot comparing September of this year comparing with September of last year.
I, no, that is not correct. Actually, if you look at September this year versus last year, we're up about $53,000. So, this is actually the first nine months of this year compared to the first nine months of last year.
Okay, I understand. And then Alderman, Solomon has also got a good point, too, is that if we can get in people understanding that they can go online shopping, not just locally, but they can also start doing some more shopping online locally as well. And I think that's one of the other things that we, as a city, can help promote, that they can shop locally as well. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just another social commentary here. You know, it seems like we do have a big event coming up in December. Lakota Nation Invitational is having their 40th anniversary. We will expect record numbers of attendance and spending in that month, so, you know, we might be able to make up a little ground in that area. So, I just want to remind everybody that's going to be a very big deal this year, and we expect record in attendance. Thank you.
Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did a little quick math, and even if our sales tax revenues from October, November, and December increase zero dollars, we will be, I'll say, only about $70,000 off of the projection. So, if we get any kind of increase, that will, will help that difference on a dollar basis.
Okay, so keep us posted. Amanda Scott.
Like to make a motion to acknowledge?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Roberts, and motion is to acknowledge. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to item number 37. Approve resolution number 2016-079, creation of budget analyst position. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another item that I pulled at Legal and Finance, and I appreciate the mayor's additional information. I think that helps a lot, I think not only for council, but for many of citizens who will go look at the agenda and read about it as well, because I know it's a concern for a lot of our constituents when we're adding new personnel to government, which government is very good at. But I just want to assure the citizens of Rapid City that this particular position, I believe, is going to help the mayor's office and finance, make sure that our directors have a source of very good information, real-time, that will help them stay on budget with their priorities in each of their respective areas. And I just want to reassure the citizens that, just like many of, some of the council members here still, when we had a previous audit function that was attempting to save the taxpayers' money, which didn't work out really well, we were able to bring that item back up, or that committee, if you will, and it was spending tax dollars of $180,000 to $200,000 a year. So, we were able to pull that back and end it because it didn't deliver what the taxpayers had hoped that it would, or that the council had hoped. So, I just want to let the citizens know that we will do the same here, and I will be here for the next three years, and so will half of this council, at least that I know of. And I just want to let them know that I will be watching this, I will be looking for cost-benefit for the taxpayer on this, and if it appears that it's not going to, I will be one of the first to put it on the agenda to end this item. One particular thing that I would like to see to get my support on this particular item is that it be moved to the finance office under the finance director, much like a corporation would. Budget analysts always will report to the CFO of the corporation, and Rapid City is a corporation. And I would hope that one of my colleagues could bring that amendment forward, and I would be glad to second it. Thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution as is.
Second.
We have a second by Richie Nordstrom. We'll go to Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can ask you a question about this position.
Yes.
So, one concern that we have is that, that this could be a politicized position, maybe not under you, you know, obviously, but maybe there's future mayors who might use this and, position and politicize it. What is your response to that concern that we might have?
You mean like making them a campaign manager, or how do you mean politicize?
You've seen, you've seen history with, with positions in the mayor's office before. And why, why is this better under you versus putting this under the finance officer?
Well, I think my thoughts on it are that the budget is the responsibility of the mayor. We have a budget process that lasts in the winter months right into the summer, so a maximum of six months or so interaction with the budget. But the remainder of that time, I believe it's the mayor's responsibility to track budget performance, not only how many dollars are in which account, but how the spending are matching up with projections, how each department is doing on its budget goals, and so on. And I think that, having that direct interaction with the mayor ensures and reinforces that the responsibility is on the mayor for the budget. It's not on the, I wouldn't say it's on the, the finance officer or staff to be individually interacting with all the departments. They are, they are, they're busy people, and they have their own tasks which are really weighted down with reporting and compliance issues, and accounts receivable and payable, and so on. So, this is a new position. It, there's a good marriage between this position and our priority-based budgeting program. That, if anything, I believe would be subject to politicizing rather than the position of budget analyst. And me, any future mayor, anytime in the, in the future, if things need to be changed, this could be made a part of the finance office. This is an experiment as to where the position belongs, and I'm willing to accept that experiment and test it out for myself, and then make the decision about where it should, where it should be.
So, Mr. Mayor, while I have a couple of minutes, so, when I think about, I think you've justified the position well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to support the position as a whole. I'm trying to think, if you're the CEO of Rapid City, just like the CEO of a business, they'll have their CFO or, you know, somebody like that reporting to them. They don't necessarily have to have all of the different budget analysts reporting to them as well. So, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, why would, why would this be ineffective in the finance department that reports up to you ultimately? You can go to them anytime you want to. Why does it have to report to you directly for you to interact with them frequently?
I think I'll be able to better explain that to you in six months or so.
Okay.
What I really believe is that whether, whatever hierarchy is indicated by the job description, this particular position will be working directly with the mayor's office on a full-time basis rather than performing traditional finance duties. There may be an appropriate time in the future to fold that back into the finance function. In fact, that, you know, that's probably the eventual logical place. But I am deeply invested in the priority budgeting system. I've got a lot at stake with this budget system. We are a little bit behind, but I'm still hoping for a January display date where we can publicly display our 2017 budget using the software and all of, you'll get to see all of our work. And so, as I said, the, whatever, what the job description says as far as hierarchy isn't as important as who's going to interact with the person, and I guarantee it'll be me.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I support your request here. I just want to share with the public that many people do not realize the size of the city, its financial assets. It isn't just that we're handling a 150-plus million-dollar-a-year budget, but we also have rolling stock that's probably worth, I think the number's at least $50 million. If I remember right, the buildings that we have include the water, wastewater, airport, and on and on, is in the millions of dollars. We have a huge operation to maintain and manage for, and it's really about time that we have someone on board that will be the, I would say, business analyst or the budget analyst's call to look at the, running the city in a way like a business. I think it's a good step in the right direction. It's long overdue. I know the compass committee that Councilman Laurenti referred to got off on chasing accounting audits, and I think that, to me, that was the wrong direction, but that was that committee. But we started talking towards the end of its life of the need to look at equipment replacement schedules, and building maintenance and management schedules, and so forth, and those are just huge, huge dollars. And this is a step in the right direction to get that done, and hopefully we'll see a, a better budget, and better management, and better timing. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to also support this motion to bring on board an analyst. Way I see this person is being an assistant to the mayor's office for preparing the budget for the year as well, and incorporating all the nuances that are involved with bringing forward a priority-based budgeting. There's a lot of work that has to be done in that, that area, and I know we're behind on it, but I don't think it's, the holdup is on our end to that much of a degree. And so, so my support of this is because of the staff that you need to do actual preparation of the budget, because I do recall you saying that you were not able to dig into all the revenues within, within the city to bring forward. And I think this position will be able to assist you in that matter. So, so I appreciate it, and hopefully we'll be able to continue going forward with this.
And Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I just wanted to chime back in real quick to say that I don't necessarily think this mayor's going to use it for political purposes, but I think it's best, if it's not a direct report because of the position, it's a budget analyst, and it should report to the chief financial officer, which is our director of finance. You know, it's, it's whether it's a real or perceived political situation, there may not be a real political use or tool for it politically, but there will be the perception that if any mayor, this mayor, or any future mayor uses this position to make a decision and says, "This is why I'm making this decision, because this budget analyst has said this and this and this," that's going to be perceived as political. There's just no doubt about it. We all know that. So, this gives that cushion, if you will, where it takes away some of that perception if it's real or not. And so, this is the only way for me really honestly to support this position. So, the motion as it appears now on the Dias, I cannot support. Thank you.
Okay, the motion is for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes with one no. And on this item, I appreciate your input on this. I appreciate you paying attention to this. And the things that I have said about the budget, and about this position, and about other things are largely in part to give you what you need to hold me and others accountable for our spending. I don't, not about to say something and then try to find a little crack to hide in. What I'm, what I'm saying is that I have high hopes, I have projections for the budget. I will be happy to reform this job description and put it where the proper place is, but I think we just have to get, get a little bit of time under our belt. And as far as the sales tax revenue goes, the finance officer will keep us informed near year-end how we're doing on that projection. So, we're at item number, still on consent calendar, by the way, item number 40, which is to acknowledge the discussion on solid waste rate increase. Go to Lisa Modric. Did we, yeah, we voted.
Thank you, Mayor. I think so we don't get confused, I'll go ahead and put a motion that we're going to, I'd like to acknowledge the discussion on solid waste rate increase. If I get a second, I'd like to retain.
Second.
Second by Jerry Wright.
Thank you. And the retaining of this item is just to capture what this process has been for the public, where at Public Works, we had a citizen that was concerned about how the rates increased. They increased for this particular constituent overnight from the time that they brought their hall in. The item that was of question was a $16 rate for roof shingles, whether it was for asphalt or for wood. So, it took a lot of, oh, I would say some, some discussion with some constituents, as well as some discussion with solid waste, and with Carl, and I don't think Carl's here tonight. But just to follow up with what we had a discussion at our meeting, Jerry and I did a meeting directly with Carl, and we really got to align where these rates are at. And what roof shingles have become is a mixed waste, and the mixed wastes have always been a higher rate than other rates, unless it came in, is what they call a clean shingle. And quite a few people had asked me, "Well, what's the difference in the shingles, and why, why did it have to go up to 59?" And if a shingle's not completely in as an asphalt clean shingle, for example, it can't be reused, or repurposed, or recycled. So, it comes in pretty much bulked out, just like it comes off your roof. So, it made sense, as we had the meeting and discussion, it had been quite some time since this particular rate had gone up. In some cases, there was a timeline that Carl put up that went all the way back to 2000 and forward. So, although we don't normally see a jump that high, go from 16 to 59, this item fell under the mixed waste, so it was really recategorizing it as a mixed waste, and that's what justified the rates, and I feel quite confident after the meetings that we had that we can move forward with that, and I appreciate Carl bringing that up.
Jerry Wright.
Thank you. Just to clarify also, the $16 ton was set up for Clayton Shingles to encourage their ability to be recycled by our loving, local paving company, so that was why that was set at 16 at the time, for clean. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge the report. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Up to item 41, which is direct staff to cease and desist new hazardous tree removal program until it can be straightened out. We'll go to Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask a question to our assistant city attorney, please.
Yes, you may.
Good evening, Wade. So, I, this, this, this program is, it was kind of directed by us and maybe in an indirect way by saying that the city should take care of its city trees that are hazardous. And so, what our Parks Department thought was that also included trees in a right-of-way. Can you tell me, is there a liability to the city for hazardous trees and right-of-ways that we need to make sure are taken care of? That, that would, that would, that would warrant us, you know, bringing the funds to the, to a program like this?
It's, it's kind of difficult to answer that.
And I know it's situational. I just mean if a tree is hanging over a sidewalk or a road, branch falls down in general, who, is it a shared liability?
Generally speaking, I don't know that we would have liability. We, we would have to know about it, that it was in a dangerous condition and, and probably have some sort of neglect of that for us to be liable. We do have the right to cut trees in the, in the public right-of-way without a property owner's okay, without any, you know, other contact. But I don't know that we necessarily have an overriding obligation to keep those trees pruned. In fact, we generally put that onus on the property owner, the adjacent property owner of that piece of right-of-way.
So, responsibility, what I wonder is, is this is not a shared, responsibility of the maintenance belongs to the homeowner. The liability in general would belong to the homeowner unless we knew about it? Is that what you're?
Yeah, it's.
We're talking in generals. I know, I know each situation's different.
Yeah. I, it would probably take a specific general or a, a specific circumstance where the, the city had notice and an opportunity to act and neglected that. I don't know that I could come up with a, a perfect situation to say where we would have liability, but there is a potential there that there would be liability.
All right, Wade, one thing I know is we have actually identified many trees that are in right-of-ways that are, that may be considered dead or diseased or hazardous. Are we, are we concerned that we've actually already identified those? And so, if we don't act on them, are we under any liability in that situation? And that might be the wrong word to use, but I.
I, I don't know if that in itself is, again, I think it's probably tree-specific, but if we went through and did a tree audit and generally said, you know, "We have six dangerous trees in this block," or, you know, something general like that, I don't know that that necessarily puts liability on us. But if somebody calls us and says, "There's a tree that's going to fall over on a car any minute on Anamosa Street," and we go and look at it and say, "Yeah, that's probably going to fall down any second now," and we don't do anything about it, I think that's the kind of situation where we could look at some possible liability.
Yeah, thank you. You go to the floor.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just kind of concerned that we're not able to move forward on this in one way or another. When I've been out walking the neighborhoods, I, I spy these dead trees or hazardous trees, and the neighbors are asking me, "What can the city do to address this issue?" In the past, we've been able to call out the Parks Department to take care of that tree. And so, I've thanked the Parks Departments on those occasions where they've been able to do that. And where that's happening at is usually on vacant properties. Somebody's moved out, and the neighbor next door is bringing that to my attention about a hazardous tree. And the other concern that I have is that I, I know we're running across people that can't afford to do these projects. And under, under the rules now with CBDG, we, we can't even do that, tree removal, to assist the property owners. So, my concern there is it's starting to put us back into the area of another concern of mine is being another property manager for, for the citizens out there. Because tonight, we did have one on our list for miscellaneous cleanup where we did have a, a tree that had to be removed, and now it's on the abatement list. So, we'd urge the council to, to take a look at some of these areas concerned because we need to address this. And because people are starting to ask me about what is going on with the trees that left over from winter storm Atlas. How do we address that? And it seems like we haven't got a good feel or a, a way to address those concerns for the citizens and on these different levels. So, now, hopefully, we can encourage the council to, to move forward in addressing this issue in some fashion. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask a question of our city attorney?
Yes.
Wade, on Mr. Solomon's line of questioning, when he was asking about specific trees and trying to get that, the way that we used to do this, if we'd go out and give somebody a notice and tell them that their tree needed to be cut down within thirty days, whatever period of time, and they didn't do it, did we take care of our liability at that time? I mean, if, eventually, we, we would go out and get it done. Or we'd have somebody do it, and we'd assess it back to their property. But I mean, if we know there's a tree out there, and we tell the homeowner they need to take care of it, doesn't that take our liability away?
Generally speaking, yes, I think it does. There might be a, a circumstance where if it's a real, you know, if it's a busy thoroughfare and it's hanging over and it's about to fall down, we might have to just do something about it. Sort of a summary abatement without a notice. And that's, that's acceptable if it's a, like a life-safety emergency kind of situation.
Yes.
But otherwise, yeah, giving notice is, is, is generally a way to, to mitigate our liability.
Thank you very much. Can I ask a question to our Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Beigler, how are you tonight?
I'm well, thank you.
So, I think I overheard Mr. Nordstrom just say that there's been times where he's got you out to cut down trees on private property. Is that true?
I'm not aware of any, but it's.
Or I mean on easements, city easements?
Well, on city right-of-way, yes.
Parks, in the parks or on private easements for people's homes?
Not easements on right-of-way.
Right-of-ways for homes? You've done that through the Parks Department?
Oh, absolutely, yes. We've gotten calls many times from, with limbs or trees that have fallen down into.
That have fallen down, but I mean trees that haven't fallen, trees that, yeah, I know you, you've done that where you've cleaned up.
Correct.
Trees. But, I mean, what I'm asking is, have you gone out at times and cut trees down in the boulevards that don't have, haven't fallen down or tree, limbs haven't?
There have been trees, there have been trees that have been taken down in the past that have been diseased or damaged. And you may still have some green leaves on them, but they are diseased and damaged. And, and to remove the possibility that they will die and fall down, they will be taken out, yes.
Do you have any idea the number of these that?
I don't, you know, and, and a lot of times, it, it follows storm events, obviously. Winter Storm Atlas was a very big example of that.
Which was kind of a enigma, I mean, you know.
It was, and what, what we're seeing now are the, the trees that were damaged first three years ago from Winter Storm Atlas and have been declining and, and finally have gotten to the point where they are dead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beigler. I brought this forward on the council when I found out this program was going on. Because we, as this council knows, this came before us in June, and then it came before us July eighteenth. And both times, we denied the program and said to go back. Well, the only reason I found out there was a program going on, I got a call from a constituent, and they said, "We're getting a tree cut down on one of our rental properties, and we want to know why we can't do it before the thirty days." Well, they hadn't seen the notice. And I said, "Well, go see, get the notice from your rental, read it to me, tell me what it says." And they called me back and said, "Oh, don't worry about it. The city's cutting it down at their cost." Well, they were willing to do it, they just wanted to have some more time to do it. And then, another thing, can I ask one more question, Jeff, since you're up there? I got a call on Thursday from a Park and Rec board member who was very upset because one of these trees that the city was going to be cutting down for free was on his property. So, I'm just curious, how many more board members on the Park and Rec have trees that are marked in their properties that are going to be cut down?
I have no idea.
Okay, well, thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
I make a motion that we direct staff to cease and desist the new hazardous tree removal program that has begun until it can be reworked into a policy that's approved by the city of Rapid City and the city council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I just want to add, like, as, we had a good conversation about this at Legal and Finance, so. And I think I said that when we wanted them to cease and desist this, that we wanted them to go back to the normal process, which is notify the homeowner, give the homeowner the time that they normally get in the code enforcement process to rectify the code enforcement violation. If they don't, then we ultimately will hire a service to rectify the issue and assess the owner. I just want to make sure that we all understand that that's what we're saying. That's not part of this motion, but I just want to make sure that maybe we need to amend it to include that? I don't know, but I just want to clarify that we want the normal process to continue until we have a new policy approved by the council and given back to staff. Thank you.
May I clarify, the point of the motion is, there is no intent to, to, to do away with anything that is currently in effect. It's policy that we've adopted or have operated under for the past number of years. Strictly the current new program that was developed. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom. Yeah, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. With that conversation that just took place, I, I don't think I, at least I don't totally understand what is to take place. Because there was a suggestion for amended motion, and now there's a counter to that. So, I, I, I'm still not understanding what the original motion is.
As I understand it, it's to prohibit the Parks Department from cutting down trees in the public right-of-way at city expense. And that leaves on the table then the standard way of doing it, which is to bill and eventually assess the homeowner.
So, most of this is going to be done through code enforcement?
I would guess code enforcement and urban forester.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Jason Solomon.
Real quick, I can support that, going to the, the way we, we were doing things, until we figure some things out. May I caution my fellow city council members to just be careful about kind of questioning volunteer boards about maybe things, you know, luxuries they're getting because they're, they're volunteering their time on boards. These are good people serving our community. We have a hard enough time recruiting people that you may have one board member and may have had a question, but you don't want to paint a broad brush for everybody. And I think it's kind of insulting. I just want to make sure that we don't do that to our volunteer board members, unless we have proof, and we don't bring that up on the dais. We research that, get the facts, and deal with it then, rather than just deal with one person. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
Just to clarify again, that my original motion had nothing to say about cease and desisting what we are doing currently under existing policy and ordinances. Thank you.
John Roberts for forty seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I wasn't questioning anything about the board members. I had a question about if anybody else had. I didn't really appreciate getting called up and chewed out about stopping this program because somebody was going to get a tree cut down. And, you know, the bad part about it is this gentleman is one of my best friends. So, that really bothered me a lot, a lot. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay, now that all the speaker request lights are off, I just want to weigh in briefly before we take a vote. We, the city of Rapid City employs an urban forester, a tree expert, a certified, trained, experienced tree expert. And we employ code enforcement officers who look for code violations and things that may cause a decrease in quality of life or maybe create a public safety hazard. In this case, there are a hundred and forty trees, a hundred and forty-some trees that have been specifically identified as hazardous, as a public safety issue, most or all of which are in North Rapid City, which stands to reason. It's one of the oldest parts of town. We're talking about liability and whether or not we're in the clear for liability. And liability is one thing, but it doesn't have everything to do with what the right thing is. These trees, you can imagine this, these neighborhoods are forming sixty years ago. And these trees are planted at some point, and they're a nice little sapling, and they grow, and they're beautiful, and the neighborhood is flourishing. And fifty or sixty years later, the neighborhood's in decay, and now the tree is dead. These are old neighborhoods. We have data that shows that the median family income in these oldest neighborhoods is very low. And so, it was brought up here once. I'll just reiterate that the normal process is to, well, the, the process that you're leaving on the table is to identify trees in the public right-of-way or on private property, notify the homeowner that they have a responsibility to clear the tree, and, and then charge them or assess it on their property taxes. So, just want everyone to understand what the process is. And that process can take weeks or months. So. Few more lights now. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't know what remaining amount of time I have.
Four minutes, I think.
But I'd like to relinquish three minutes to Mr. Roberts.
Well, Mr. Roberts has spoken twice, so the time's not the issue. But this is, I know this is an issue that he brought up, and so, we'll go with, we'll go with your suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the only thing that I'm really worried about this, because I do understand most of these are in my ward. But I also understand that every time we start a new social program, which is what this will be, we are going to have another one that's going to follow it. And, you know, one of the things that is a huge, huge problem in North Rapid and all over Rapid City are broken-up sidewalks. And they also could be a huge liability. So, is that going to be our next program where we're going to start spending tax dollars on things that have traditionally been part of the homeowner's responsibilities? And I also know that in North Rapid, over fifty percent of our homes are owned by landlords. So, if there's a hundred and forty-five trees targeted in North Rapid, probably about seventy or eighty of them are owned by landlords. So, you know, granted, there are quite a few people that are going to be up there that aren't going to be able to afford these trees. But having them assessed back to their property where, in the future, when they sell the home, they can take care of it rather than paying it upfront or starting a program that could possibly, and it will, increase their property taxes, which a lot of people are very much on the brink of not being able to afford anymore because they have gone up so much in the last five or ten years in Rapid City. So, we, it just, it, it bothers me that government in general believes that we have to take care of everything, everything. People have to have some personal responsibility, especially when it comes to your property. So, if we decide on this program, I just want to warn you, what's the next program? And then, what's the next program after that? So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Jason Solomon.
Real quick, I think Mr. Roberts brings up a good point. And what I want to, I want to just, point of clarification, I don't believe Mr. Roberts meant to necessarily throw all these board members under a bus. I just was very careful about. I just was very careful about the way we say things, but I don't think that's what he meant, and so I just want to make sure that folks hear that, that that's not what I was saying at all. And I think you have a good point about, there's something to be said about responsibility. But I would say that we have to go back to staff and tell them what we expect. We just say, instead of just saying, "Go to staff, you guys figure it out," and they keep coming back at things, and we keep saying, "No." Can we bring them further direction than what we have given them thus far? I'll yield the floor.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, where I'm following this lead also is from the North Rapid Civic Association, because a few months ago, they came up with a proposal, in fact, I think it came out as a resolution, but anyway, the intent behind it was to have the city start doing something about trees within the City of Rapid City. Whether it's a social program or not, I don't believe that was their intent, but if this, it's, to me, it's like building a sidewalk. We've got to start someplace. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to share a little history, several years ago, we started a program with Pine Beetle in the Wild and Interface Program. And all we asked last summer, at least twice, I believe it was twice, for staff to come back to us with a recommendation, because we couldn't totally buy the entire program. That's all we want now. In that development of those two programs, the Parks Board, Parks Staff, two members of the council, and the mayor involved, we came up with a program that worked. That's all we're asking, that they do that this time. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor is to do away with the current proactive tree removal program, and all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, motion carries. One, no. Now, onto non-consent items. Oh, wait. Yeah, we didn't do 40. Yeah, onto non-consent items, items 43 through 95, and we'll open public comment on those items. We have a few speaker request forms, and we'll start with Corey Schaefer. If you could come to the podium, and you have three minutes, sir. He'll be speaking on items 51 through 53.
Thank you, and off to my right, I want to thank everybody in our neighborhood that's showed up and represented this issue that we've gone through for the last couple of months. It's a, it's regarding a vacation easement, which I'm sure you're all aware of. And after being informed by the city via email that we had approximately one month to remove our structures in the back of our yards, a lot of concern and questions were brought forth, not only by myself, my family, but all the residents within our, that were affected by this. Some questions that we still have answers that haven't come forth yet, or maybe be vague, that are spelled out a little bit differently, or interpreted different from other people. One being that it's a, it's a plan put in place for the 100-year flood. There's a concern that if it's vacated or a variance is provided, that it could set a precedence. I, I guess I question that a little bit. Just about a week and a half ago, now it's the maintenance, the access is for maintenance. So, with that being said, we have never been provided, or it was never documented at the time, what the definition of an, of a major drainage easement is, and what it does. If we're, if we're preparing for a flood, is there some type of slope? Is it adjusted for volume? And I'm not the engineer, I'm not an engineer, but is it adjusted for volume and control of that water disseminating from south to north downhill between approximately 15 and 20 houses? We found the Vacation of Easement app online. We were assisted by the city in completing this application as the city seen fit. That being notifying utility companies, paying a fee for these applications, which, for any curiosity, there was three applications. That doesn't mean there's three houses. It could be 10 houses together, and that would be one application. A house was skipped, and another two or three houses, and that was one application. So, that might alleviate any curiosity as to the minimal amount of applications that were submitted for the amount of houses that we're trying to address here. When meeting with Vicki Fisher initially, she advised that if an engineer approved this vacation, or some sort of variance, that that's all I would need. And Vicki suggested I contact Kyle at KTM, who's the original developer. Kyle was notified. He has been able to provide three solutions to this matter, and we are asking the city to consider option number three. Kyle is here and can articulate these options and answer any questions regarding the drainage. And just understand that there are hardships, many different hardships in every household, to include the current investment, future investments, and both financially, and many other burdens that go along with the residents of these homes. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Lance Steiger.
Yes, I'm Lance Steiger, live at 4418 Duckhorn Street. Got a video, if we can play that, showing during a rainstorm, the runoff that's actually going on down the back of our lot lines. As you can see on these yards, all the water slopes to the front, on the front of the yards goes to the back, on the back, there's going to be absolutely no more water coming into this area than what there currently is. There's streets all the way around us. So, as this subdivision keeps going, it's not going to be more water coming to it. I guess some of the things that Kyle has come up with to say here as recommendations would benefit the city plus us. There's, maintenance in this whole deal would be, I mean, it's 10-foot of our backyards. We maintain it, it's an awesome neighborhood, we take pride in our yards. I guess that's about it. Sorry, I'm nervous.
That's okay. Let's give Carissa a try and see how she does.
Good afternoon. And I'd like to just finish up with kind of some key points that our neighborhood had. A lot of you guys had received this in an email like, last week from me, and some of the concerns to address for the Public Works. The city is still protected from the 100-year flood by the proposals made from KTM Designs. He designed them to accommodate the flow for the 100-year flood and beyond, actually. He made sure to cover his liability and reputation as a very respected engineer in his proposals. And he does recommend keeping the major drainage, but is confident that some adjustments to the landscaping can help accommodate the 100-year flood and any other water flow that is expected to come through the area. The city has made exceptions to the width on drainage easements before. I referenced the one specifically and sent it in an email of an encroachment on a utility and drainage easement, and they reduced the width that the city had required for maintenance, fire hazards, and drainage. And the city determined that the easement still functioned as intended, and an engineer's analysis was submitted confirming this, and that the financial cost of fixing the problem after the fact was not necessary. And we feel like we've kind of fallen the same category. The 20 feet of space for maintenance would remain for emergencies, as long as we kept the easement in place, but allowed for the accommodations, you would still have that 20 feet of space if an emergency came around that they would need it. It's like the minor easements on the side, where the city can utilize it if they need to. The city does not need to fear a suit for vacating the easement, because we are not actually vacating the easement in this case. The rest of the neighborhood has not issued any concerns with these proposals, to our knowledge at least. All of Duckhorn did submit applications to you guys, and then several members of Vinecliff were in the process of building their home at the same time that we got our letters. So, they kind of got a benefit of knowledge before they closed on their house, because they found out about the easement prior to that, and fixed the land plots for Vinecliff. And there's still four unsold lots represented by Chad Zanstra and Mike Nezland, and both of them submitted letters to the city in support of Kyle's proposals. The easement was designed this way in its earliest of stages. The design, the design phases, it's difficult to determine which avenue water will flow down to. So, the city asked for that overkill to help protect the residents, and now we can look at it when the houses are being built to understand that the easement can handle the 100-year flood. We'd like to thank the council for their time and consideration. We honestly feel like we have done our job in making sure that the city is protected, and all homeowners are as well. We'd like to see that the city help us to come up with a compromise that they can feel comfortable moving forward with. We have preference of Mr. Tralor's option to allow the obstructions to remain in place, but adjust the landscaping and fences to his recommendations, and allow adequate water flow and protection for all the property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Kyle Tralor from KTM.
Hello, I'm Kyle Tralor with KTM Design Solutions. First, I want to thank the council for taking the time to consider this matter. Also, I have to thank the neighborhood, too, it's been great to work with. It's not every day that an entire neighborhood can come together and work towards a solution where there is a problem. I did put together just a few quick slides I'd like to run through, to kind of help provide some background information, and just kind of detail what exactly we're talking about. First, this is, this is just a general vicinity map to show the area that we're talking about. We are just southeast of Elkville Road off of Minnesota Street. The area highlighted in green is the specific project area. I thought it was also important to show that a lot of regional drainage improvements have been made to this area as well, and so, a lot of the regional runoff, runoff from other areas is flowing through those blue areas. There's detention that's been constructed. The green area is really a truly closed basin. This is just kind of a zoomed-in view of that same neighborhood. What I'd really like you to see here is the area that's highlighted in yellow. This is the area that we are contributing runoff from. It is just the backyards of these particular homes. There is no flow that comes from the streets, there's no flow that comes from off-site. It is just simply what falls on the backyards of these, these homes. We were contacted by the neighborhood to take a look and see how we could help out. The first thing we did is we went back and we looked at the flow rates that we had determined in the design process, and we went back to the 100-year flow specifically, and as you've kind of heard so far, the 20-foot easement really is the Rapid City minimum, and that's more than is truly needed in this, in this case. So, we did come up with a few recommendations based on the actual flow volumes that we determined, the slopes, what we have in the ground right now. And basically, this is, this is just kind of a visualization of those same recommendations. The area in blue is what actually is required to carry the 100-year flow, and it's everywhere from as narrow as five feet on the far southern side to at most 10 feet on the northern side of this property. Also, it is a little, I don't have the screen here. All right, well, we'll skip that, but you can see on the far south side of this, this drainage is all collected into a culvert and a drainage box. That box is not located in the area that we're talking about. We're not going to be putting fences across that. That's going to stay open and protected with this drainage easement, as is the pipe that drains out of this area. And then just to give you an idea of the depths and what we're talking about when we talk about bringing the fences up across here, we're as shallow as .3 feet on the far south side, up to as deep as, you know, eight tenths of a foot, so, you know, eight to 10 inches on the far south side, two to three inches on, or sorry, two to three inches on the south side, eight to 10 inches on the north side. And that, that would give you an idea of where that fence line would need to come up to, to guarantee unobstructed flow through this easement. And just to kind of address some of the comments that were brought up in the Public Works Committee, safety, you know, is there a flooding problem? Are we, are we going to encumber more, more problems upstream? Because this is such a limited basin, it's fully developed, we're only talking about these manicured yards, we're not talking about runoff bringing in debris from off-site. We feel that, that yes, by providing enough room for the flow to move through here, that you are, in fact, keeping everybody in this neighborhood safe. Maintenance, maintenance is already taken care of through the covenants of this, of this subdivision. Everybody's required, through their covenants, to mow and maintain this area. Beyond mowing, it's, it's hard to envision what other maintenance would be required inside of this well with such really limited drainage contribution. And then functionality, finally. This drainage easement is going to remain. We're allowing for it to do what it was intended to do, and therefore, it's able to serve its purpose and still protect all of the items that the homeowners brought up here earlier. So, with that, I'll, I'll make myself available for any questions that may come up later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll close the public comment, and we'll go on to City Ordinances, item number 43, is a second reading of ordinance 6147, an ordinance regarding supplemental appropriation number four for 2016. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Scott, second by Laurenti. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 44 is a first reading, ordinance number 6148, an ordinance regarding supplemental appropriation number five for 2016. Motion by Scott, second by Laurenti. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And we'll go on to a Public Works item, we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 45, appeal of denial of requests for exemption to not dedicate additional, yeah, Collector Street right-of-way along Luna Avenue. Send to City Council without recommendation. Yield the floor.
We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Hello, Mayor, may I ask Mr. Dale Tekke a question on this, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Dale, I also noticed that you buzzed in, so I'm going to ask you a general question to start with, and that is, what comments would you offer the City Council on this item?
As part of the discussion at the Public Works Committee, I believe Alderman Estes had inquired as to whether or not the applicant would dedicate an easement in lieu of dedicating public right-of-way. I had indicated Alderman Estes that we would reach out to the applicant. We have reached out to the applicant. He had indicated that he would be favorable to dedicating, dedicated easement for the water main instead of the public right-of, or instead of dedicating the public right-of-way. So, that's an option to the council. Once again, staff's recommendation is still for the applicant to dedicate an additional four-foot of public right-of-way. So, just wanted to let you know that we did contact the applicant per the committee's request, and that's what we found.
Thank you, Dale. And after streaming the public and, Public Works Committee meeting, the other question that I would have is, currently, there are some improvements in this land that the city was asking to be additionally added for right-of-way. Did I understand that correctly?
Could you repeat that, please?
There are improvements within the piece of property that the city is asking to be included into the right-of-way?
There are no improvements that will be necessary, other than the construction of sidewalk at the time a building permit is pulled.
I didn't ask that right. Are there already, like, is there a water main, or is there some other utilities already within the piece of property the city is asking for additional right-of-way?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Yes, there are two 20-inch water mains located on this side of the road. We believe that one of them is right under the property line, so it would be virtually impossible for the city to have to excavate down to that water main to do any repairs or taps to it without trespassing on the adjoining property.
So, the difference between asking for right-of-way, so that the city actually owns the property and can tear it up to get to the utilities that are located underneath it, and an easement, which would just give the city the right to tear up the property in order to get to... in order to get to the underlying utilities, is there any, is there any reason why the city couldn't compromise with the property owner and do the easement? I mean, what would be the detriment from the city's behalf to do an easement rather than a right-of-way?
The only detriment would be if it's an easement, that property owner can still utilize it for parking, they could pave over it, park cars over it. So the restoration cost, if the city were to get in there to excavate, would be much more expensive if it were in a boulevard area of the public right-of.
Well, that's what, thank you, because that was my follow-up question, is if the city council decides to do an easement, then if the city does have to tear up anything that is built over that, within that easement, is it the city, and I think you're confirming that the city would have to put the property back in the condition in which it was before the city tore it up?
Not necessarily. I don't know that we would be required to, but as course of practice, we do that.
Okay. Is there a potential for other utilities to go into this property if the city were to acquire it as a right-of-way? Or are the water mains the only utilities that you can foresee going into this right-of-way piece?
The water mains exist already. There are standards for separation between utilities. It is so tight in there that I don't see how another utility could be installed that close to the water main. So no, there's really not room for additional utilities to be put in the right-of-way. However, there is an eight-foot drainage, or minor drainage and utility easement that exists on the interior side of the lot line that some of the private utilities could go in on private property.
Thank you, Dale. Mayor, I'll yield the floor.
Oops. Sorry. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to give this motion the correct wording on it. I'll move to uphold staff's denial of the request for an exception.
Second by Laurenti.
Mayor, just, if I may, just a follow-up. And my understanding is if the, if we went without the easement over there, and for me, this is pretty complicated, but essentially, it's, for me, it's an expense that would incur in the future if we didn't do this according to the proposal that we have in front of us right now. And if we get into tearing up a parking lot, or tearing up landscaping, et cetera, that means we have to go back in and repair all of that. And that's another additional burden on the city. So that, hopefully that will explain the reason why I am supporting staff's recommendation for denial.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to uphold staff's denial of the request for exception. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Aye.
Motion carries with one no from Mr. Roberts. On to Legal Finance Committee items, we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 46, discussion on revised 2016 city council mission and vision statement, and I recommend, well, it says send it to council without recommendation, so I will do that. I will not make a recommendation right now until we discuss it.
Jerry Wright.
I'll make a motion to approve it if I have the table for discussion.
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it, this statement.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for approval. Richie, would you like to speak?
I've requested out of the floor after that.
Oh, okay. I have trouble understanding that.
That's okay. I think that I would like to share that this statement was devised with great discussion at the retreat, where six of us were attendance, and I know some of the other councils were not, members were not able to make it. But we saw this as our tool in how we should conduct ourselves with our business for the city council, as the city council. I know the city, the comment came up from the mayor that should this be the discussion for the city on behalf of the entire city. I just want to clarify that the city, through its master plan, has done something similar, and other members that were at our retreat can chime in. But I do feel that our discussion was to focus our analysis and our attitude in how we conduct business, was this purpose of this vision statement and our mission, and the values are identical to those that are in their master plan. So I think it's our document, I think it will serve us well, and I think it will assist us in our keeping focused. It's simple enough and clear enough that we will be able to do a better job. So I support it. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll support the motion, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands, including the public, this is just a mission and vision for the city council members, not the city as a whole, meaning that the departments, a lot of these departments, in fact, all of them have their own vision and mission statement prepared already. But something for the council members to consider, and I'm thankful that the mayor brought it to my attention, that as far as a mission and vision statement for the city of Rapid City, I would suggest that we do have one in place already. And it's already on the west edge of our parking lot over there with that monument sign that we have over there. And right now, it says on there, "Working together to improve, protect, and enrich our community." And for me, that's the city's vision. So just want to clarify that I'm supporting the mission and vision for just the council members only. Thank you.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start by saying I appreciate your comments in your letter as well. As I voiced at the legal and finance meeting, I had hoped, and I was in Kansas City when this was being done, but I am one of those people as well that believes whatever the council does is on behalf of the people. It doesn't matter what we do. Everything we do is spending a dollar, spending a minute, we're here tonight on behalf of the people. So I don't know how you separate our mission statement from the people. I don't quite understand that. But what I would hope and I would support is one of my council members amending the motion to continue it, or a substitute motion, whichever is most appropriate, for two weeks so that, and I don't think we need to make some major overhauls, I think we can just rephrase some of these things so that they encompass more of an outreach to the community, and I think it does, because it reflects the master plan, which is kind of the basis of the different bullet points. But I'm hoping that maybe we can just modify some of the wording a bit so that it reflects more of not only what I have said at legal and finance, but what the mayor had put in his letter to us at the council. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the group that was at the retreat and was looking at the vision and the mission statements, we were working from documents that did have those as specific to city council. So it was not something that we're looking at as directed to the entire city, which is a huge thing to try to just come up with a mission statement, and I think that Richie Nordstrom put it well. What we were trying to accomplish was something short enough that we could all say it. And what we came up with was to operate with something, I'm paraphrasing here, but with excellence and integrity. And I think that that is a noble goal, and I think it's a good mission statement. And I think to go back and revisit these particular items that we use as a way to direct our efforts is something that's worthy. We need to look at these things every once in a while so we make sure that we're still on the same page with each other and with the city. So thank you.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the substitute motion that we continue this for two weeks for further discussion. I think it's only fair that we let Alderman Laurenti get his say in there. And also, I thought Alderman Nordstrom brought up a great point about the vision statement sitting outside already. And I think, I think what the mayor has said and what Alderman Laurenti has said tonight is true. What we do is on behalf of the city. The city council is not a separate department of the city, per se. We are representing the community, and we're representing the people. And so we have a code of conduct for us, and as I've thought about this, and I heard Alderman Laurenti's comments and Nordstrom's comments, and read the mayor's letter to us, and I had a lot to do with this.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me, thank you. I thought somebody said second. Laurenti nodded at me, I thought that was a second, I'm sorry. I'll just go on. Anyways, so for that reason, I think it's not going to hurt us to put this off for a couple of weeks, get some more comments, maybe look at what the city has for the vision statement, and put it in there. So that's my substitute.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion, a second by Steve Laurenti, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. So now that we've got the secondary motion on there, and we're saying we're going to throw it back out there two weeks, how will we formulate, finalize, and bring it back to us? What will we be doing to make a difference between now and two weeks from now? How shall we advise council to advise council?
Jerry Wright's got the answer to that.
I think we have a third retreat, and hopefully everybody attends. Thank you. To be set by council leadership. Thank you.
Okay, well, this substitute motion is on the floor to bring it back in two weeks. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes with one no. Surprised me. Well, listen, I just want to tell you, the council has met twice. They have been poring through the Rapid City's comprehensive plan. I don't care who you are, citizen, city employee, elected official, if you're spending time in that comprehensive plan, you're doing the right thing for Rapid City. So hats off to the council for thinking ahead and going through that exercise. Next item, number 47, please.
Approve 2017 budget supplement report and identify the funding source as transferring $50,000 from the city council contingency fund and accept the remaining balance from the existing 2017 police budget. And I move to approve.
Okay. Motion in a second by Laurenti. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to ask the chief of police a question for, please.
Okay.
Chief, do you have any concerns over this grant or this supplemental portion and et cetera, any other concerns that we should be aware of?
I do have concerns. I believe that the proposed mechanism in order to identify the funding would clearly be, it would be in violation of the Department of Justice statute that requires that we avoid supplanting when we receive a grant. I apologize for not being at the legal finance committee meeting. I did review the testimony that our assistant chief presented. He did present that he was concerned regarding the issue of supplanting. Since then, I have thoroughly reviewed the information available from the COPS legal office regarding that, and I believe that we would be at great risk if we did it in the mechanism that was proposed at the legal finance meeting. So I would ask that the council consider approval as it was brought forward originally, and both the documents are linked. And just to reiterate, it suggests that $72,320 will come from the general fund undesignated cash with your approval. And I just also want to reiterate that that funding source was something that was suggested after I consulted with the finance officer. And in addition, I have consulted our research and development manager, and he too has reviewed the COPS guidelines and believes that we should do it in the way that was originally recommended so that we don't expose ourselves to risk, which in the end could result, and if we were audited and did supplant, or if it was determined that we supplanted the budget, then we would be liable for the entire grant award, which is $375,000. So this grant is an awesome opportunity for our city and for our department. We were very excited to receive the award, and we would appreciate your support so that we can follow through and accept it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield.
Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for stating that. It was one of the concerns that I had had in the way we were going to be bringing this supplement forward. The concern was that we were going to pull $50,000 out of council contingency, but beyond that, we have a lot of grant opportunities out there, and so if we're pulling the only $50,000 that we have from city council contingency, then what do we do with the other funding opportunities that we have, matching funds and otherwise? And I did learn, I didn't know this before, that we actually are giving you the approval to go out there and get these grants, so we're already informed on that behalf. It seems like maybe we need to come up with a way to be prepared once those grants come through, that we can justify where the funding is coming from. And a contingency fund from the council didn't seem like it was going to solve the entire resources opportunity. It seemed like it was just going to fix one item today. So I'm glad to hear it needs to go back. Now, the question is, is this the right way, or is this the way it's always been done, where we go back into our undesignated cash? And again, it's undesignedated, and that's the tricky word that you use when you're in business, is if it hasn't been designated and it's undesignedated, then it's an opportunity to spend it and get it out of the bank and get it working. And so I can certainly be in favor of reversing this back to what was formally brought to us in order to make sure that we get this grant approved and we get it working for us on the streets. And maybe we need to address how we're going to do that in the future, because there are so many opportunities. We don't want to leave any grants or fundings or matching behind in any way. If we get them and they're hard to get, we should be able to move forward with those. So I appreciate that, and now I'll let the conversations begin on the funding source.
Jerry Wright.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2017 budget supplement request as submitted by the Rapid City Police Department, support the COPS grant.
Second.
If I may, retain the floor.
Yes, we have a substitute motion in a second, second by Lisa Modric, and you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I think that, I want to reiterate what I did the other day, and I think the council needs to look at this closely. Whenever we apply for a grant, at least in my history, and apparently the chief is bringing this up too, that when a department applies for a grant and finances, the department writes off or assigns to it or signs for it, the council approves that the funding source has been identified. And when you go for that grant application, it's heard by a board and they approve it, they assume that by your submission that you have funded it. If you fail to do that, you're disqualified, and I think you're creating all kinds of problems. So I think that we need to be aware of the fact that when we are approving these grant applications, that the staff is providing the application which covers how it's funded. And we need to make sure that when we approve that, that that funding is identified and taken care of, so we don't run into a situation like this. But the chief is correct. I think it'd be a terrible mistake to second-guess or put some wording in here that's different than what we did when we did the grant application. So I ask for your support on this amendment. Thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Chief Jegeris a question, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So Chief, when we filed for this grant, we specified that it was going to increase our budget with undesignated cash to match funds?
No, that is not correct. We didn't specify the source, however, the issue with the amendment that you proposed at the legal finance committee is that essentially by only identifying $50,000 of the required 73, or I'm sorry, $72,320,000 provides a shortage of $22,320. And your proposal was that we would accept the remaining balance from the existing approved 2017 police budget. So if I could just read- from the existing approved 2017 police budget. So if I could just read from documents from the legal department, from the Department of Justice, Community Oriented Policing, COPS grant, um, you just give me a second, I will share some language that is very relevant to this. But this is keys to avoid a supplanting violation. Make sure that the grant-funded purchases or hires are over and above the number of positions, equipment, technology, and/or other approved costs that otherwise would have been funded by the grantee in absence of the COPS grant. So by requiring the department to find, to absorb twenty-two thousand dollars within the current approved budget, essentially that's a reduction and would clearly be a violation of the supplanting in that instance.
See, I read it differently, Chief, so I can't support this, because I believe a budget is an estimate. And when, until you can get your actuals in there, I believe that you have room in your budget, potential room, when you're looking a year out. Your overtime has been budgeted the last three years significantly under what the actuals have come in. I don't recall you coming before the city council the last three years and asking for those additional funds. So I believe that there may be some room and maybe some controls. So that's where, if it, if it comes down to twenty-three dollars, I know to outfit an officer and to bring an officer on force is a lot more than twenty-three thousand dollars. So if it is literally a dollar, and that's what I'm hearing you say, even if we were to say, oh, we'll fund it even undesignedated cash, everything except one dollar, you're saying this grant would be in jeopardy. And I just can't buy that. So, thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for our finance officer, please.
Yes, sir.
Pauline, in past years, I thought we always budgeted the COPS grants into the budget, and then if it was used, it was used. And then I imagine if it wasn't, it just came back at the end of the year or was put into some other program. But didn't we in the past used to budget this into the police department's budget?
We did. And so, you would see the full price of the officers, offset by the, the federal grant revenue, and the rest would be made up through fees or through undesignedated cash at that time. I believe at least once in the last couple of years, we did not receive the grant. And so, the police department came forward and said, well, we have basically then one police officer budgeted for, if you take out the revenue and expenses that matched, that, that canceled each other out. And he came before council and requested that he still be able to hire the one person, because that money was in the, in the budget. He can clarify that if there is more than one a year. But yes, we typically do. But because of our track record of not getting the grants lately, we chose to wait until we knew for sure if we got the grant or not before adding it to the budget.
And doesn't that just complicate things? Because it's only seventy-two thousand dollars. And usually, you know, if you look at the hiring that, that we've been doing in the police department, it would just make sense if we didn't get that to increase one more officer. So I'm just...
Honestly, there's been times before, this is, it's one of those that we've, we've applied for grants in the past, whether it's an operating grant like this is for police officers, or if it's a capital grant, like we've done for the transit division. We don't know at the time of budgeting if we're going to get the grant or not. And so, we just kind of hold off, because we don't want to tie up that money if there's other needs out there. And so, really, it's, it's looking at what is the best use of the budgeting authority at the time with the information we know at the time. And because we didn't know, we thought it was best to not include that at the time.
Okay. Thank you, Pauline. I appreciate that.
I believe we have a substitute motion on the floor to approve the grant request as originally proposed with money from undesignedated cash. Is that correct? As I submitted. Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
That motion passes five to three, three no's, Scott, Laurenti, and Roberts, I believe. Okay. And now on to item number forty-eight, under Community Planning and Development, and we'll go to Darla Drew.
Item forty-eight, a request by KTM Design Solutions for Hague Brothers LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots one through three of block one and lots one through twelve of block two of Moon Meadows, generally described as being located east of Mount Rushmore Road and north of Samus Trail. Recommendation, approve with stipulations.
Okay, we have a second by John Roberts. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item forty-nine, a request by Renner Associates LLC for Brant Groot for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lot LG of Gibson subdivision, generally described as being located at thirty-nine sixty-four Red Rock Canyon Road. Recommendation, approve with stipulations.
Second by John Roberts. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number fifty.
Item fifty, a request by Spurlet Consulting, Inc. for Sodak Development Company for a preliminary subdivision for proposed lots eight through eleven of block six, lots nine through fourteen of block nine, and lots one through six of block ten of Homestead subdivision, generally described as being located north of the intersection of Hackens Street and Darian Street. Recommendation, approve with, approve with stipulations.
Second by John Roberts. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item fifty-one.
Question before I go into these, Mayor. Do we want to take these as, as, vote on all three at once?
I think we should vote on them separately, but I would hope we could agree, the argument's the same for all three of them. So maybe we could discuss it on one item and then vote accordingly on the others, just to streamline a little bit.
So, read through them all and then discussion?
I would just read fifty-one.
Okay. Thank you. Item fifty-one, Elks Crossing, a request by Carissa Steiger for multiple, see file, to consider an appeal for staff's decision on vacation of easement of property generally described as being located at four-three-three-zero, or four, forty-three-thirty, forty-three-forty, forty-three-fifty, forty-three-sixty, forty-three-seventy, forty-four-oh-two, forty-four-ten, forty-four-eighteen, forty-four-twenty-six, forty-four-thirty-four, what? Is there a problem?
[inaudible]
Okay, forty-five-fourteen, forty-five-twenty-two, and forty-five-thirty-eight Duck Horn Street.
And the recommendation, Senate, Council, without...
Without recommendation.
Okay. So we'll go to Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. The constituents that are in the room are constituents of Ward One. I have watched them and worked with them closely since this summer, when they received the letter that pretty much came out of the blue for the neighborhood. And I would say the half of this room is the neighborhood. It's, it's been just well organized as they've been trying to figure out what had happened to Duck Horn Street. Duck Horn Street was built two years ago. It was the first residential homes that went in. Many of them are first-time buyers. They're young homeowners. They're homeowners that have gone into downsizing. It's an absolutely beautiful neighborhood. Many of the surveys that they received at the time that they were purchasing their homes stated that they actually had an eight-foot minor easement on their surveys. And they put many of these on the link for you to see where the confusion happened. So, two years ago, that, that took place. They built their fences to make sure that they weren't going over the easements. So when the letter came from the city that they had crossed into a major, they had to really dig to find out what that ma, major form had stated and learned an awful lot from that. So as they worked with this, they did let street, reach out to the engineer, Kyle in this case, to reexamine this. The reason why this was brought before you and what puts a question mark on you, that it's a vacate of easement, is because that's the only form that was provided for them to fill out. There wasn't any other box that they could check on to look for, for variances, or reducing it to minors, or memorandums of agreement, or anything else that could be worked on from this neighborhood. Not only did the video show how little that trickle is, but also the way Kyle had, had determined as an engineer of what is happening, and that really shows true. The item fifty-one, excluding fifty-two and fifty-three, those are consecutive homes, as a neighborhood needs to be. All of those homes are registered and requested for a review of this, so that it can protect their assets, thousands and thousands of dollars, and including some home businesses that have daycares and such. So there's also a loss of income in there. So it truly means an awful lot to them to make sure that this is done right. They don't want to do anything that isn't right, but they also need to protect their investment as well, and find the solution, which I really think that they've secured that by going out and finding those solutions on their own. So the vacate application, of course, was going to be denied. They were told right up front, it's the only form to do. You're going to get it in Nile, and then you'll get to be before the city council. Thus, that's why they are here today. It was the only process available to them to come before us and take a look at what is happening. On the very end of Duck Horn, those aren't in the, the need for change, because they're already in concrete form. And those are the ones that go under the street and into where the cell pond is on the, on the other side. So there's no cell pond on this side. Then on Vine Cliff, which is also the backside of their homes, those were all, as you saw in one of the links in here, those hadn't even been built yet. So this neighborhood got built, the other ones were just started. That's how they learned. Now on Vine Cliff, oh my gosh, we have a problem, which is why you're seeing fifty-two and fifty-three, and why it's Vine Cliff. Those are the first homes to go in to find out as well, from Duck Horn, that there's a situation. That whole street will become, as well, in this room, as we're trying to solve this problem. So I compliment Duck Horn for taking this on, because it is continuous. It's all the way on the entire street. There isn't a house in the middle of that. That's why, when it's talked about, there's twenty-nine homes involved. There's actually these thirteen that are in, that are directly involved. The other side is just now building and coming, coming into it. So I, I think Kyle did a great representation, and perhaps the council would like to ask him any more details on that. But what it came down to when they reviewed from when it was topographical, and let's put a major here, to what it is now, it's called overkill. The way it's designed, it doesn't have any other water coming and flowing. The video showed a very hard and coarse rainstorm. The little dots you saw, the little white ones, that was hail that was about golf ball size. And that trickle was immediately from that storm. I'd also gone out and monitored myself. I wanted to see it from my own eyes. And I saw that it truly was, no matter how hard the storms were, and I was watching for the hard ones. I know somebody that could provide the hard storms for me, that was a trickle coming back there. Maintenance has come before us on the maintenance side, before they even received the letter, they were completely manicured in that easement. So hats off to Duck Horn and Vine Cliff for that. And I will eat.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I, if I may, I'd like to ask Public Works, Mr. Teck, a question on...
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Teck, on this particular, on these items, I should say there's approximately, I think we have fifteen addresses at least here, but you're saying there's going to be more. There is more, obviously. Can you speak to what we're, what we're dealing with here with the easement and then if there's a necessity for, it's my understanding, we're looking at ten feet on either side of it, and it's a total of twenty feet. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you speak to the necessity for that type of easement? If you can talk to that, please.
I, I most certainly can. As part of the subdivision process, engineers are required to design not only the streets and utilities, but drainage system in the neighborhood to make sure that there's adequate drainage. The developer in this instance wanted to develop lots that had walkout basements, had a rear, rear lot line that was lower than the front, so they could accommodate a building that had a rear walkout. By doing that, that necessitated a rear drainage swale be installed at the rear both of these streets, or both of these lots that front both Duck Horn and Vine Cliff. The city's standing practice and policies over the years have been, if it serves more than two homes, it is drainage coming from other properties, and the city's going to be expected to maintain that. We have major drainage easements all over town, where we have drainage coming from multiple properties running through people's backyards. The minimum easement required per our criteria is twenty feet in width. And that is to be able to get equipment in those easements and maintain them. Do we have encroachments in them? Absolutely. With our stormwater drainage utility that was established in 2014, we have a crew that's out regularly maintaining these easements. I can give you an example. Most recently, up on Minnesota Street, I believe there was five homes up there that had a twenty-foot drainage easement. The easement in the homes were less than fifteen years old. There had been some filled place, some changes made to that drainage easement, where it did not function like it was originally designed and originally constructed. Took about a year to get people to remove their fences for the city crews to be able to get in there and make corrections, so the downstream person wasn't being flooded out or seeing an inordinate amount of water. So the, the purpose for these easements is for the good of the entire neighborhood. I can guarantee you, in fifteen, twenty years, when all the property owners have changed and other encroachments, if they're allowed to be in there, someone's going to have an issue back there, and the city's going to be expected to go back there and maintain it. And we cannot do that in anything less than twenty feet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask a question of, of the homeowner's engineer?
Yes.
I'm going to put you on Skype spot, Kyle. Can you pull up that subdivision map again? Probably not. No?
Here it comes.
That one. You can go back to the other ones highlighted. It's good. On this, you're talking about a closed drainage area there to the north, or, can you give me the direction on that map? I just want to make sure I have the direction right. Is it up north or is...
Up is north.
Up is north. So it's draining from north to south there?
From south to north.
South to north there. Okay. And that's what I thought. Now, is that Minnesota on the boundary of the south side?
Yes, it is.
And all the drainage coming off of Minnesota drains down Minnesota? It doesn't drain down this drainage area? There's nothing coming from the south there off the road, or off anything to the east, or off? You're, you said the drainage here is only from the backyards of those homes, correct?
That is correct.
Now, I'm guessing when this was platted as the original subdivision, there was a major drainage easement put in there that was going to be for the whole subdivision, more than just these number of houses that are between there? Is that the reason that was put in there, or is that...
No, the, the reason that the major drainage easement was put in there is because it was a requirement of the, the plating process. Because there are more than two properties draining to one spot, the city requires the major drainage easement. And in that case, the, the minimum is the twenty feet.
Because one of the things that I did notice is I noticed that, that on their surveys, it was saying it was an eight-foot drainage easement.
Right.
And I'm trying to figure out how that was missed from the surveyors, because this should have been originally on, on the development plat, wasn't it, that it was a twenty-foot drainage easement?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I, I, at no fault of the homeowners do I see where they would have known that this was a, you know, at least from the information I got. You did a drainage study on what's there right now, correct?
Correct.
And in a hundred-year flood event, an eight-foot drainage easement would, would take care of it, or, you know, I know you said ten foot at the one end where it's going into the, into the outfall.
So we have, you know, we have Minnesota Street right here. So this is, we're talking the, the southern end of the property. You know, the, the entire width of this hundred-year flow, you know, we've got all these cross-sections identified, fit in, in five foot through here, then it jumps up to six foot. And this is, as you're incrementally looking at what each, you know, potential yard is adding to this lot.
Yes.
All the way to the very farthest downstream section, where the ten-foot width, which is still half of that twenty-foot drainage easement.
Can you show me on that map where the concrete comes in that, that Alderwoman Modric was talking about?
Here, there's a inlet structure right here that drains through an RCP pipe that then, then runs out to one of those major drainage detention ponds.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can I, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question of, of Mr. Teck? Because we don't have, well, he is the planning director, so. What can we actually do about this? I mean, can we actually, as a council, say, you know, we want this to be a twelve-foot drainage easement, or we want this to... Or we want this to be, or, you know, I'm just curious, what can we as a council do?
You can do whatever you like, really, is what it boils down to.
Awesome.
Staff's recommendation is to leave it as is per the criteria adopted by previous city councils.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think I'm just going to get out and see if anybody makes any kind of a motion.
Jerry Wright.
Can I ask Kyle a question, please?
Yep.
Not saying that I support this, but as a licensed engineer, are you willing to replat and certify that a sixteen-foot wide easement will suffice? And sign your, put your seal on it?
Yes, our office is willing to sign that, that document and state that.
So, as a professional engineer licensed in the state of South Dakota, you're willing to sign that a sixteen-foot easement will be adequate for that floodway and all the way through it, correct?
Correct. Now, the one point of clarification here, I am an EIT and this will be signed by a professional engineer in our office.
And then you can't speak for, you can't speak for the PE that will sign it, can you?
No. So, I want to be clear on that.
Let me ask, may I ask Mr. Tech a question, Mayor? May I ask Mr. Tech a question? Understanding that, I'm not saying I'm supporting this issue, but I wanted for discussion. If a licensed engineer were to come in with a sixteen-foot versus a twenty-foot easement, would that be sufficient instead of the standard twenty-foot easement? Or is it, does our drainage criteria allow a design that takes exception to our specific standard?
It does not.
Okay, thank you. Good question, thank you, Kyle. So, the question is, excuse me, who would be the PE?
Greg Barbo.
Okay, I'll think about this.
And, and just as kind of a follow-up point on that, he did stamp the recommendations report, which outlined these, these exact items that we're talking about. Uh, so if there is any question as to whether he was willing to, to stand up here and defend these, that, that was his, his method of doing that.
Mayor, may I ask him a follow-up question to that?
Yes.
Is he willing to sign a certified plat outlining that sixteen-foot easement?
I'm speaking for him, but absolutely, yes.
Yeah, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I may need some help on this motion, but I want to make sure I'm getting this correctly. Is that, um, the, uh, motion that I'm going to present is that we uphold staff's recommendation for twenty-feet easement?
Okay, second by Amanda Scott.
By me, Mayor?
Yes.
Address a question to, uh, the Public Works Director, Dale Tech, please.
Yes.
Uh, Dale, if we did go down to a sixteen-foot easement, um, how would we get our equipment in and out, et cetera? How would we handle our equipment being able to operate in that area?
It would be very difficult, that's really all I could say. Um, you know, we could talk about a fourteen-foot easement or a twelve-foot easement. There's a reason there's a standard twenty-foot easement. Uh, same with our underground utilities. We have a minimum of twenty-foot, uh, width required unless it's buried deeper. We need to be able to get in there with equipment, uh, to drive in, to excavate, to haul the material out. And a twenty-foot is a reasonable minimum standard.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, thank you, Dale. That's kind of where I'm at, is that I've, I'm not an operator, I've, I've, but I've watched the crews doing a lot of, of operations in this, this type of environment. And I've asked to have other folks take into consideration for what is taking place. And, and, uh, the Public Works Director reminded me of another incident on Minnesota Street. But there's another one over on East Centennial that took place years ago that was very similar to this, where we had to clear out all the property in that drainage way. And it still took some time and some alterations that had to be made by the property owners. And another one that we just recently experienced, I don't remember the total final outcome, but it's on Racine Street, um, just north of Anamosa Street. We had something very comparable to this. So, I've asked other people to take a look at that area, but I haven't heard any results on that research. So, that's where I'm at, is I don't want to go through the same experiences that we've gone through on these other incidents. Um, so I'm using them as a precedence for me or an example why we don't want to do what is being proposed here tonight. That's why I'm supporting the twenty-foot easement. I yield.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I read over all the documentation that, that was sent from the families and, uh, the neighbors. And really, I mean, you guys had me, I was going, yep, yep, we can, we can change this, we can do this. And then, and then I had a question. When we were talking about this at first, I heard the fence was built to protect the children. Someone said that. Now, what are we protecting the children from if we're building those fences? I know you built them, you know, thinking that you were within the regulations. But nonetheless, you're building a fence to protect the kids from intruders, uh, grass? I don't know what you're protecting them from, but I do know one thing you're protecting them from is water. And water is a magnet for children. And you don't have to have a hundred-year flood to draw children to a drainage ditch. And so, in my mind, when I think about, you know, this particular ditch and the fact that you built fences, you're trying to keep kids from going down into that water. That's, that's how I think of it. Because I'm a parent, you know? I mean, I had kids, they wanted to play in the water, that's what they do. And so, we don't, if we don't want to have any situations arise, you know, you want to keep your fences, I understand it. We've put some money into that and we've put time and money into this drainage ditch. So, maybe we can kind of, uh, come up with a way to extend the time that you have to make these corrections. Thirty days is ridiculous, you know, but maybe a year, you know, to, to make the, the proper corrections to your, your property. That's, that's what I would be willing to, to say. I would still uphold that we needed twenty-foot drainage ditch there just because I've, I've seen the damage that could be done by, by these floods. And I, you know, I know Lisa saw it. But when you see buckets of water coming out of the sky and filling up your drainage ditch, I think you'll understand why we did this. So, um, I'm, I'm going to uphold this, thank you.
Jason Solomon.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask a question of Dale Tech, please?
Yes.
Tech, do we have other neighborhoods in the community that have, say, an eight-foot easement in a similar kind of situation that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of.
None that have been...
Not that the city would maintain, no.
Okay. When you hear their engineer, when you hear Kyle's description and what it could handle in that, in that area, do you have objection to that? Do you disagree with the findings that we saw in, in, in the presentation?
No, his calculations are probably correct. I haven't personally reviewed them. However, it's not the actual width of the water that is running down that channel that's important. It's the ability to access that channel for future maintenance. Uh, can we and will we receive storm that exceeds what their calculation shows? Someday we will. Someday that water will run wider and deeper in that channel than what they've computed.
All right, yield the floor, thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the neighborhood of, of Duckhorn, you've, you've done a great job in trying to figure out what you can do as a neighborhood. And I think you may have some other options. Unfortunately, they may be legal or, or require more money or more cost. You guys have brought forward to the city council since I've been on the city council, which I'm going on five years now, a very unique situation. Because when we put the str- stormwater drainage utility in place back a few years, we've got so many neighborhoods that are trying to get out of a floodplain and trying to get improvements, culverts, concrete, steel and everything else to direct water away from their neighborhoods. Because developers didn't take the time or didn't know the other additional buildup around their area was going to contribute more water. And then also, I, I, I know I heard it at the Public Works when they were talking about this. Up in Ward Four, we've got a huge problem where a lot of additional buildup ended up causing more water to run. I'm talking about Racine. More water to run off of the La Crosse and the intersection of where that goes out to the new, uh, Sam's Club and everything else. All that water was redirected. And I know the city staff had to go out and take a look at it and they had to clean up some of the drainage utility and get that water flowing back right. So, um, water seems like it's, it's, it's very innocuous. It doesn't seem like it's, it's, it's that big of a deal until you get calls in the middle of the night of people saying, I've got three feet of water in my basement and I need somebody to do something about it. So, where I'm coming from is I, I would be willing to hear something in the future of, of, of looking at that. But what's being brought to us tonight, from what I'm reading, is a vacation of the twenty-foot easement and I can't support that at this time. So, thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one of the first things I want to clarify is, is this is nothing like Racine was. Racine was a drainage that had not been properly taken care of for forty years. So, and from the pictures that I can see, you guys are taking care of your drainage very well. Um, and you know, this is a different drainage than a lot of the other drainages that I think we're kind of pushing it in with. You know, we're, we're, we're kind of comparing it with some of the channel drainages that we have. We're comparing it with some of the regional drainages that we have. You know, this, this is just a relatively small number of houses, twenty, twenty-nine houses. I would have a big issue with this. And I would say, yes, you have to have a twenty-foot easement if the water was draining off of the street to the south of you, you know? But since this is a centralized channel that is just draining the backyards of homes, okay? And that's why I, I want to say this is nothing like Racine. And let me clarify that. Because that is draining hundreds and hundreds of thousands of square feet of pavement from Walmart and La Crosse and, you know, yours is absolutely nothing like that. So, you know, if somebody would make a motion to lower this channel from twenty feet to sixteen feet, I would definitely support it right now. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
I don't think it's good precedent to start whacking away on drainage easements in this town with a flood of seventy-two and so forth. But something tells me we should delay this for, say, thirty days and see if there's some compromise that could be done by the design engineer and our staff. So, I make a motion, substitute motion that we delay for, until the second Public Works meeting in December.
Okay, substitute motion, do I hear a second? Okay. We have a second?
Can we call a question?
Got some lights here. D. Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, what are we hoping to accomplish by the thirty-day delay? I don't understand the compromise that you're seeking.
Vote against it.
I'm sorry, say that again?
If you don't want to give it a month to resolve potential solutions, just vote against it, thank you.
Yield. Okay, we have a substitute motion on the floor to delay for thirty days. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
We have a roll call, please.
Scott. Laurenti. Wright. Modric.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Nordstrom. Drew. Solomon.
Aye.
Tie vote.
Chair votes aye. Give it thirty days. It's a big issue. Doesn't mean we'll have a different result, but, uh, deserves, deserves a little more time.
Okay.
Hey, item fifty-two, please.
Elks Crossing, a request by Carissa Steiger for Cora Jo and Elton Barber. To consider an appeal of staff's decision on a vacation of easement for property generally being described, uh, described as being located at forty-eight thirty-five Vine Cliff Drive. Send a recommendation, send to the city council without recommendation, sorry about that. I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
Is it what?
Go ahead, I'm sorry. What's the point of order?
Mayor, the point of order that I'm calling is that we had discussed that if, once we made a decision on one, that we would carry through with a vote on the other ones.
That's why I said approve.
But by approving it, it would be contrary if it goes through to what we just decided, which was waiting and are giving an additional thirty days. So, if the motion maker would like to make a motion to the same motion?
I will yield.
Okay. Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, since we did have the thirty days on the motion that approved for fifty-one, I'd like to also recommend the same motion for fifty-two and fifty-three to move that to the thirty-day span and, uh, bring fifty-one, fifty-two and fifty-three together in thirty days.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to bring fifty-two and fifty-three back in thirty days. Jerry? Yeah, I think we can, you would need... Okay, based on the outcome of fifty-one, I think it's appropriate to take both fifty-two and fifty-three in one vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, motion carries, and one no from Scott. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Do I go home and try to save a hour or two of, uh, your day? Okay, uh, next on to alcoholic beverage license applications, item fifty-four through ninety-five. I have, uh, discussed with the police chief prior to the meeting, any concerns on these? And there are none, he recommends approval. So, I think I would entertain a motion to approve fifty-four through ninety-five.
Second.
Motion by Solomon, second by Laurenti. Uh, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now, on to item ninety-five A, property tax abatement request, city of Rapid City. And we'll go to Paulie Insumption Finance Officer for an explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Late last week, we were notified by, um, Janet Sailor, Sailor, the county treasurer, that there was a piece of property that was transferred back to the city and that there were special assessments outstanding. And, um, if it wasn't paid by December first, that there would be, it would be in the paper and, and all this other stuff. Well, long story short, we didn't even know that we had this property. Looking at the history, um, the assessment was done back in nineteen ninety-six. The property was sold. It looked like possibly on a tax deed in early two thousands. The county got it back, it came to the city, it went back to the county, it came back to the city. And so, at this point, it's easier if we just abate the, this, because it's, technically, it's just a special assessment that we put on the property to start with. The money is long gone, twenty years ago. Um, and we, we could pay it and then the county could just pay it right back to us. And so, in the sake of making it easier, it's just easier to ask for it to be abated.
Amanda Scott.
Hello, Mayor, may I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, you may.
Paulie, where is this property located?
It's on East St. Patrick Street and it's over three acres of property. And the amount that if it gets abated tonight is act, it's, it's quite steep, so... that if it gets abated tonight is act- it's, it's quite steep. So, I'm warning you there,
Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make that motion what, uh, Chief Finance Officer suggested and, uh, we'll see where it goes.
And could we restate the motion? Pauline, can we restate what the mo- the preferred motion is?
Just to approve, um, requesting abatement of the special assessment ta- on this property and forward it to the county for their consideration.
That's what I said. So, that's the motion and we have a second. Uh, Laurenti, uh, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. On to public hearing items 96 through 103. There's no, uh, speaker requests for a public hearing. We'll go on to consent public hearing items 96 through 102. Entertain a motion to approve those items unless you have changes. Okay, motion to approve by Laurenti, second by Solomon. All in favor of approving 96 through 102, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And those items passed takes us to the end of the consent. Now, uh, under the non-consent public hearing, item 103, second reading, ordinance 6146 and ordinance amending section 1706 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a res- uh, request by FMG for Holiday Station Stores for a rezoning from low-density residential district to general commercial district for property generally located as being locate- or generally described as being located northwest of East Highway 44 and Elk Vale Road. The recommendation from committee was to approve. I didn't make that motion. Okay, Laurenti and, uh, Roberts made those motions. Uh, all in favor of that item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Onto 104, the bill list. We'll go to Pauline Sumption, finance officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the total bill list, there are no changes, um, as to what is attached. If you notice, there is, um, an impressed account, uh, request for $70. That was to file that Teton Coalition, um, lawsuit to protect our rights there. Grand total is $5,741,054.32. This is the amount I am asking you to request, but I want to kind of do like a little, um, let you guys know that included in the bill list is a check for the Black Hill Soccer Federation. That is for the loan on the signage out of the soccer fields that was approved. And they have actually asked that we not issue them that check, so we will avoid it because they have been able to collect enough money on their sponsorships and their pledges where they don't need that. So, the total loan at this point is only about $75,000. So, just kudos to them and for your information.
Okay, um, approval by Laurenti, second by Solomon for the bill list. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Do adjourn in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, good night.